So at this time, we will now present the 2021 reopening plan. Then Dr. Gay, do you want to start?
Yes, yes, thank you very much. There's a PowerPoint on the screen, but if for your convenience, there's a PowerPoint at your desk, if it's easier for you to follow either way. I want to start out, as I said many times, as I share with the board, that I'm very proud of all the work that the Oversight Committee has done over the last couple of weeks, working diligently to create a plan that I'm very proud to present and that we all are very proud to present, that we believe is respectful to all our stakeholders. And I think tonight, I'll share this with the board. At the end of our presentation, every member of the Oversight Committee has a little part to play in presenting it tonight. At the end, of course, we'll entertain any questions you have regarding our plan. So this planning began quite some time. We've, this is to provide the best possible academic experience and being safe while adhering to the academic health and safety guidance, set by the only state board of education, IDPH, CDC. As recent as maybe about four hours ago, three hours ago, we got another 103-page report from ISBE on some guidelines on the reopening of schools. So it is very fluid and we will, we have and will continue to adhere to the guideline, guidance from the state and these state agencies. What is very important, as we planned our, begin to plan, is to get stakeholder input. So we did do this student, family and staff survey, and we got some great results we're sharing with you. About 83.8% of families are likely to send their students to school when we reopen on-site. About 73% students, 70% families and 61% of staff at that point felt somewhat safe to, or to completely safe, returning to school on-site. And we continued during the last couple of weeks, as recently as this week, to continue communicating with all staff members, with the, getting feedback from them on where we're moving. So some people may be wondering why we're at January, not January at all, July 23rd. And you know, some schools, we know, presented their plan last week, some earlier this week. However, you know, in this 230, we believe in the collaborative effort. So when you have a collaborative effort, a collaborative process takes time to be respectful, to get input and to really look at the data as you move forward. So we began with 13 subcommittees, including representatives of teachers associations, support staff and food service. On the screen and on your website, on your packet, you see a list of the 13 committees. And there was an advisory committee. It was an advisory committee to give us input in the event we went back. What are some of the issues that we need to face during, with all of those subcommittees? And then from the subcommittee, the Oversight Committee, which is the three assistants superintendent, the three principals, myself, Carla's, Ernie is, I guess, the ex-official, but she keeps all our notes and makes things look pretty and comes out with these designs and all that and make sure that we stay on target. So the plan I want to share with you tonight, that the, again, the Oversight Committee will go in much more detail, we feel aligns with Restore Illinois Plan. So Restore Illinois Phases 1, 2, 3, will tie into, will work on our D230 Proud Return to School Plan of Stage 1, will be fully remote. If the state goes back to 1, 2 and 3 phases, that ties into what we call Stage 1. When State of Illinois is in Phase 4, which they are now, our 230, D230 Proud has two stages, Stage 2 and Stage 3. Stage 2 is suggesting 25% of students on-site on a rotating schedule and move to, at the right time, to Stage 3, which is a 50% on-site rotating schedule. The schedule and the actual periods, how it's going to work, will be explained in a few minutes. Restore Illinois Phase 5 is when there's a vaccine, readily available vaccine. That is D230 Stage 4, fully on-site. I would imagine as a state goes from Phase 4 to Phase 5 and we transition from Stage 3 to Stage 4, it will be a gradual phase as well as we move to the next phase. One thing I want to make very clear is that the remote will look quite different. The guidelines set by ISBE for COVID-19 shelter order were vastly different as it's going to go into the new school year. When students are remote, and they will be through the 25% and with the 50% in our plan, students will attend class through a live connection daily. Attendance will be recorded for each class period. And quite different from the plan in the spring, traditional grading practices also will be in effect. So moving forward, we are looking forward to welcoming students on-site or remotely. We will continue to work to ensure quality instruction delivery for all students on-site or remotely. We will continue to follow IDPH Health and Safety Protocols. They are a key component for our Return to School Plan. We firmly believe the social-emotional supports of students are necessary and they will be provided by our school personnel on-site or remotely. Our guidance evals, will avow, we will reassess the plan as needed as the guidance changes from state agencies. And I thank everyone for their continueness, their continued to be compassionate, flexible and passionate for our student-staff. It's very appreciated and it's very, very fluid plan. We believe the benefits of this plan are multiple. It reduces the number of students on campus to approximately 25 to 50% to promote physical distance on buses, hallways and in classes through Stage 2 and Stage 3. It allows us, our schools, to adhere to the IDPH and CDC Safety Protocols through Stages 2 and 3. It allows for in-person instruction and connection among students and staff and clearly address the concerns raised by students, families and staff regarding motivation to remain engaged in learning, including grades and making attendance count. It does support the academic, social-emotional needs of our students with dedicated check-in time every day, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, first in advisory to check the social-emotional aspects of our students. This provides dedicated time for our staff to communicate with families and students. If this allows for continuation of educational virtually, should a student need to self-quarantine but still feel well enough to take part in classes, because we have both. And this structure, we believe, can easily transition, transition to a fully remote should the need arise due to change in Restore Illinois Phases or other needs. So the options for our families is a blended on-site, remote program or fully remote. At this time, Eric Olson, Principal of Stagg High School, will explain the blended on-site, remote program.
Well, good evening, everyone. Very good to see all of you. The blended on-site, remote plan comprises Stage 2 and Stage 3 of the D230 Proud Reopening Plan. This model blends the use of both on-site and remote learning experiences for our students. These two stages divide students, student attendance to reduce the overall number of students in the school, but will still provide both direct instruction and remote instruction simultaneously. Stage 2 would see 25% of the students in the school on a rotating basis, with all students attending school on-site one day a week. Stage 3 transitions to 50% of the students on-site, with all students attending school twice a week. Those students who are in the school building will follow their class schedule in a traditional manner, moving from class to class. Those who are remote will follow their schedule of attending classes with their on-site classmates virtually at the same time. Therefore, students at home will be attending and participating in all of their classes and following the same schedule. With the D230 Proud Plan, flexibility is built in to allow for accommodations for students who receive special education services, English learner services, 504 Plan accommodations and other students who have been identified as needing additional support. Important to note with this plan, and different from the state mandates in the spring, traditional grading practices will be used and attendance will be taken for both on-site and remote learning students. Attendance will be taken each period for both on-site and remote learners. The D230 Proud Reopening Plan allows families to choose to have their child participate in a fully remote manner. And there are a variety of reasons that families may choose this option. And we believe in the importance of allowing families the flexibility to make this choice for their child. Students who are participating in a fully remote option do not attend school on-site. However, they are enrolled and participating in classes with their classmates virtually, with their class schedule, with their class schedule, attendance procedures and grading procedures being the same as their classmates who are on-site. Directions and a family declaration form will be sent to families with an August 7 deadline to allow families time to discuss the needs of their child and what plan best fits their needs. Parents make their commitment to a blended on-site or fully remote for the entirety of the first semester or until the State of Illinois moves to Phase 5 of the Restore Illinois Plan and our district can move to Stage 4 of the D230 Proud Reopening Plan with 100% of students receiving on-site instruction. Now hand it over to my colleague, Mr. Nolting from Andrew High School.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to present our plan. As Eric had mentioned, the schedule in general would have essentially students divided into four groups based on alphabet. These four groups would then be fluid based on if we're in our Stage 2 format or our Stage 3. In Stage 2, one group of students would be live in-person instruction, while the other three-quarters or 75% of our students would be learning synchronously and remotely. And then those students would rotate each day of the week, with the exception of Wednesdays, which for all students and staff would be a remote day. As we migrate into Stage 3, then we are able to combine those two groups. So in this example, Groups A and B together, and then 50% of our students would be in school twice a week for on-site instruction. And two, the other students would be at home learning remotely. One of the aspects that was something that we are very proud of, and I think one of the members of the Teachers Association leadership referred to as a trailblazing approach to reentry for school, is our first couple of weeks back. As you could see, or as you know, as many of you have students yourself, our kids have not been in the building since March. And our staff has not been in the building since March. And now they're coming back to a completely different learning platform based on the circumstances of the pandemic. This approach that you see on this calendar example is a thoughtful and meaningful approach to maximize teacher acclimatization, back to the building and adjust their learning platforms accordingly. This platform allows our staff to come back for an extended period of time for Institute Days and Remote Planning Instruction Days, in which they will be working as a collegial team to plan for instruction. We will have two days of students, freshmen and transfers coming to the school in Groups A, A, B and C, D, so grouped, divided by Alpha. And then we will begin an orientation week, which I'll get to on our next slide, that will have a quarter of our students attending live and in-person, allowing us to get them used to the process, which will include transportation and other things that'll come later in this presentation. And other students will be participating in an orientation experience, like I said, I'll get to in a moment. And then we will be able to, at that point, assess continuation to move to potentially Phase 3, where 50% of our students are in the building. These additional planning days allow for teachers and administrators to employ the instructional model and adjust to the still fluid, as Dr. Gay mentioned, even as of today, updates we received from ISBE and the IDPH. The quarter attendance provides an appropriate phase in for students that will also help inform administration that our processes and procedures that we've been planning on this summer are safe and effective for our students and our staff. And then the orientation is an original and significant component. We have to realize, at no juncture at the beginning of this year, will the school look the same for our kids. We have to make them comfortable and make them familiar and make them aware of what these new expectations are. What you see here is a model of what our orientation would look like. So if you get a vision the week of the 24th, one-fourth of our students will be in school, meeting with their teachers, going through their schedules, getting used to the procedures and processes that we, that we are, were under obligation to employ. Other students will be participating in online synchronous presentations that will include, include various topics. Wednesdays will be an orientation to the Remote Learning Day for all students. But these three days that students will be participating in orientation meetings will include three clusters. One would be led by the main office, which would be including a welcome mat, an orientation to the grading process, which will be distinctly different from what they experienced in the previous remote learning platform, orientation to athletics and co-curriculars, whatever that may look like in the next few weeks, and an overview of academic supports and technology resources while during this, these phases. There'll be a separate presentation from our Dean's Office. They'll review our PPE expectations, transportation services, parking, hallway expectations, which will be unique, orientation to the symptom screening and nurse services, as well as other topics. And then finally, our guidance. How do you leverage your guidance support services? How do you reach out for social-emotional support if needed? How do you go about college and career readiness? Because we're not slowing down on our kids getting ready for life after high school. So that is a little bit of an orientation to our schedule. Welcome, Mr. Tyrell, Dr. Tyrell, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Nolting. Good evening, everyone. As my colleagues have shared, appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight with all of you to share our plan. Now that you have heard how the blended on-site, remote and fully remote options align to Stages 2 and 3 of the D230 Proud Reopening Plan, I will share a bit about the specific bell schedule that students will follow during Stages 2 and 3. The bell schedule that you will see on the next slide applies to both the blended on-site, remote and fully remote options. A positive component of the plan is that it provides a consistent daily schedule for all students, those attending in-person and those attending remotely. As Dr. Gay shared previously, even though students attending remotely will attend through a live connection to class. Each day will begin with advisory, one of the cornerstones of District 230, giving teachers time to check in with students regarding their academic and social-emotional needs. Additionally, you will see in the bell schedule that passing periods will be shortened to encourage students to go directly to class and not congregate in hallways. Now let's take a look at the bell schedule. As you can see, zero hour starts at 8:35 a.m. and advisory at 9:30 a.m. The school day ends at 3 p.m. Periods 1, 3, 7 and 8 are 35 minutes in length, while periods 4, 5 and 6 are 42 minutes in length in order to ensure enough time for lunch periods. As noted on this slide, Wednesday, on Wednesdays, student attendance begins at 10:04 a.m. There will be no zero hour and no advisory on Wednesdays within the proposed framework. Zero hour class periods are 44 minutes in length on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday to account for not having class on Wednesdays. And now Mr. Olson's going to come back up to the podium and talk about PPE and physical distancing.
Hello again. So with the D230 Proud Reopening Plan, PPE and physical distancing must be utilized to provide a safe environment for students and staff. Guidelines from the Illinois Department of Public Health requires that face masks must be used and worn at all times on campus and on the bus. These face masks must meet the standards established by IDPH for use by the general public. Exceptions to the ma, to mask usage by an individual will only be made in accordance with the guidance of IDPH and through the approval of an individualized health plan process from our Pupil Personnel Services Department and our Nurses Office. This approval must occur before the first day of school. Due to the fact that all students and staff will be wearing masks, students and staff will be required to have their IDs visible at all times. Schools will be providing their students lanyards to wear their IDs on. In the District 230 Proud Reopening Plan, IDs play an important role and will be utilized during the day to also allow students to access other services such as transportation and food services. This will be explained in more detail during this presentation. Schools will be providing one reusable, washable face mask for each student and staff member. Replacement masks will need to be provided by the family and replacements will also be available for purchase at the school. The D230 Proud Reopening Plan has been designed to promote physical distancing of students and staff. IDPH and the CDC recommend keeping a six-foot physical distance in order to avoid close contact. The Illinois Department of Public Health defines close contact for the purposes of consideration of quarantining individuals as an individual who has, who was within six feet of a COVID-positive individual with symptoms for more than 15 minutes. Physical distancing markers will be placed in common areas such as offices, bathrooms, et cetera, along with the designation of one-way hallways and stairwells where possible within the school building. Now on to Dr. Wheaton.
Good evening. I want to talk about health certification along with PPE and physical distancing. In order to be on campus, District 230 will adhere to the Illinois Department of Public Health rules regarding students and staff certifying that they are not presently exhibiting symptoms related to COVID-19. The process for this will be communicated in August. According to the, to the most current IDPH and CDC guidance, those symptoms include fever of 100.4 degrees or higher, cough, shortness of breath, sore throat, chest tightness, extreme fatigue, loss of sense of taste or smell, diarrhea, muscle aches or headaches. In terms of COVID-19 symptoms, when a student or staff member has symptoms, they must see a medical provider and be fever-free for 72 hours without the use of fever-reducing medication and for at least 10 days in terms of being assessed when their symptoms first appear before returning to school. Even with symptoms or a positive test, if students feel well enough, they may continue learning by attending class remotely. Each of our schools has a registered school nurse on staff who will follow the Illinois Department of Public Health guidelines, including an isolation area for anyone who shows COVID-19 symptoms. In the event that there is a COVID-19 test positive, those with a positive COVID-19 test must follow the Illinois Department of Public Health quarantine rules. A medical release will be required to return to school. Illinois Department of Public Health guidelines will be followed and those include individuals who did not have close contact with the person who is sick can return immediately after disinfection. Those who had contact with someone who tested positive for COVID-19 or is suspected of having a COVID-19 infection should isolate at home and monitor for symptoms for 14 days. Close contact means the individual is, was within six feet of the individual's symptoms for more than five minutes, 15 minutes. Going to turn it over to Mr. Nolting again, who's going to talk about hallways and classrooms.
As we do our best to control social distancing, physical distancing, our hallways and classrooms will be adjusted specifically to accommodate our lower enrollment based on Phase 2 and Phase, or Stage 2 and Stage 3. We will have increased supervision in the hallway to ensure that students are not congregating and moving as they, as they move forward through the hallways from class to class. We will be incorporating one-way hallways and stairwells wherever possible to hopefully ensure that there are no congestion areas in our hallways. Our water fountains will be shut down. However, we will be encouraging students to bring water bottles because our water bottle filling stations will be available for students as well. And our classrooms will be adjusted in order to maximize physical distancing in accordance to IDPH and ISBE guidelines. At this point, we are looking at all desks facing in the same direction and spaced apart. Seating charts will allow, will be followed, excuse me, will be established and followed so that we do have the ability to do any tracing that we may end up having to do if a student attracts or has symptoms. We are going to designate teacher zones in the classroom. As again, as Mr. Olson acknowledged, we need to remove the, the opportunity for students and staff to be within six feet for 15 minutes or longer. So teacher zones will be established to make sure that that distancing is maintained. And we will be looking at signage that'll be posted throughout the building to remind students and staff and visitors potentially of the rules about hand washing, using masks and maintaining physical distance.
As you have heard throughout tonight's presentation, within Stages 2 and 3 of the D230 Proud Reopening Plan, approximately 25 to 50% of our students will be on campus. This framework also allows for significantly fewer students on a bus than the IDPH allows. Distancing protocols will be followed and students will be required to properly wear face masks. Students will also be required to wear IDs and lanyards, which must be visible. Students will load the bus seats in the back to the front and unload the bus front to back in order to limit interaction and contact. There will be no eating or drinking on buses. And as always, concerns regarding bus issues should be reported to the Dean's Office. Each school will review parking pass procedures to accommodate more students driving to campus. This should also reduce the number of students riding buses to our schools. Each of our schools will be setting and communicating specific arrival times and doors. The school plans will have specific entrances for walkers, bus riders, drivers and those students that are dropped off in order to best implement social distancing. Students will go directly to their advisory when arriving. Those students attending in-person for zero hour will go directly to their zero hour class. Lockers will not be used as we start the school year, but the process will be reviewed as the weather changes later in the semester. Accommodations regarding locker use can be made for students with medical needs. Each of our schools will communicate the specific process through town hall meetings. Just as students will need to go directly to class when arriving to campus, they must exit campus immediately after school, except for those participating in school-approved co-curriculars, which are pending as we follow guidance from the IDPH, ISBE and IHSA. And now John Lovell's going to come up to talk about cleaning guidelines and food service.
Thank you. Yeah, cleaning protocols are being enhanced to respond to the need for a heightened level of cleaning. Our Director of Facilities, Dave Keating, has worked closely with our contractor, cleaning contractor, communication has been ongoing. Once a plan is approved, meetings will occur to finalize a cleaning protocol. Our Transportation Coordinator, Keesha Williams, and I have both visited with each of our transportation carriers and reviewed processes and procedures for cleaning the buses. The chemicals they're using have been reviewed by our cleaning team and approved to be CDC-approved cleaning products. Besides nightly cleaning and cleaning throughout the day, deep cleaning will be performed on Wednesdays and Saturdays. Additional electrostatic sprayers have been ordered for each building to be able to cover large areas in an efficient manner. Hand sanitizer stations are being added near each washroom by entrances and in common areas. And Mr. Keating has also ordered disinfecting wipes and a supply will be provided in each of the classrooms. Moving on to food service, Principal's been working to identify areas at each of the buildings to accommodate added spaces for students to eat lunch. System will be in place so students are directed to go to their assigned eating areas. The use of dividers is being explored since new guidance came out yesterday, allowing large spaces to be divided into more than one area. You know, it's important that we, you know, get the kids to lunch as quickly as we can. So finding spaces close by the cafeteria is important. Congestion in eating areas will be reduced because juniors and seniors will be assigned study halls. There will be no self-serve There will be no self-serve stations in the cafeteria. The Director of Food Service, Mary Morgan, has developed both hot and cold lunch options with some level of variety, but selections will be reduced considerably. Face masks can be removed once students are seated, or they can maintain social distancing. Payment scanners have been purchased and communication is planned to only allow a cashless, touchless process for checkout. The cashier will also have the ability to look up students in the system or to manually enter an ID, but students will not be using a keypad at checkout. Breakfast and afternoon grill will be eliminated to avoid students congregating at these times in the morning and afternoon. And just after 3 o'clock, food service will be distributing frozen take-home items to those students who wish to buy or receive meals for days they are not in attendance. These meals will be available for both free and paid students.
Dr. Dryer's up next.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you in person. I hope everyone's enjoying their summers to the best of their abilities. My pleasure being here tonight. I have the privilege of sharing our plans for social-emotional learning, technology, and co-curriculars. For social-emotional learning, as always, our staff remain ready, willing, and able to provide services for all of our students. Our psychologists, our social workers, our counselors are looking forward to welcoming our students, whether it's through advisory, whether it's through individual meetings, whether it's through virtual or face-to-face meetings when the students are in the building. We are ready to go with our students. Our advisory, as you heard earlier from our principals, are going to be in the first period of the day to welcome our students in, and they'll be scheduled every day for that extra relationship building with our students. We know that this is going to be a critical component of our student's school day. We are looking at ways to design additional supports for our staff to be prepared to work with our students. We know that many of our students will be experiencing a lot from where we left them off in March. So we need to be ready to support our students on their return in. For technology, under the leadership of our brilliant CTO, Mr. John Connolly, again, we've been one-to-one with our technology for years now. So our students are very well-used to having their Chromebook supports. So we've been doing this already for a while. Our staff is also very well-prepared working with our technology. We're focusing on supporting staff and students on virtual learning opportunities as well as expanding our blended learning opportunities. Our students, we've worked very efficiently, Mr. Connolly, again, under his leadership, ensuring all of our students have technology supports at home and internet at home through offering hotspots. And we will be very quick to assist our incoming 8th grade students, particularly students in need that might need internet service as well. So we already will be working at ways to identify our students to make sure they have the tech that they need. Co-curriculars are a little bit different. As Dr. Gay explained earlier today, the rules of the game change daily. We're watching very closely to see how this proceeds, and we'll be following guidance from IDPH, ISBE, and IHSA. We're hoping to be able to run some of our extracurriculars. If they're approved, we hope to run them, mostly virtual, and our main goal will be safety. And you know, we want to try to have our students have as many experiences as they possibly can here at the high school, but we need to ensure that they are safe in doing so. So that's an update from the Tech Co-Curricular and SEL point. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dryer. I have to, I'm going to cover the other two stages of D-230 Proud, 1 and 4. So Stage 1 is if Restore Illinois is in Phase 1, 2, 3, and that's a fully remote plan. The fully remote plan will mirror the blended onsite, remote plan as much as possible to assure that when we, if we do go to Stage 1, we have a smooth transition for our students between the stages. If fully remote, the same bell schedule will be used as Dr. Tyrell talked about earlier. All the classes will be held five days a week, the same as the blended onsite, remote plan, and we will continue with traditional grading and attendance procedures will be in place. Also, Special Services Department will communicate with our families to assure that accommodations are to be met as possible. IEP provisions will be met, and special programs to communicate to address specific needs, as always, part of D-230. Co-curricular sponsors and advisors will develop plans to promote participation in remote setting whenever possible. Our amazing PPS service team will be available remotely. We will continue with our free and reduced lunch for students. And as always, the district will follow the state IDPH CDC guidelines, which may require us to change our plan as we move along. And D-230 Proud, Stage 4, again aligns with Restore Illinois, Phase 5. That's our fully onsite plan. It is only possible if a vaccine or cure is readily available. And District 230 will move to fully onsite when Illinois moves to Phase 5 in accordance with state guidelines, but I'm confident we'll have to transition to that as well. Now Carla will explain the communication plan.
So we realize that this is a lot of information that we just shared with the board in our presentation tonight. So we have a robust communication plan in place to make sure that our families, students, and community understand the plan, can consider their options, and make the choice that is right for their family. So tonight, we are presenting the presentation for your approval. Tomorrow, if approved, the communication plan and the choice form for parents to let us know which decision they have made in Stage 2 will be sent out through phone, email, text, mobile app, website, social media. We've also created some videos, and we're in the process of translating our documents into the top languages that our families speak to make sure that everyone has the information that they need. That information will all be available at our dedicated website, d230.org/covid19. Once families have the information in their hands, they will then have the opportunity to attend virtual meetings that will be held by each of our campuses. So STAG will hold their virtual meeting on Thursday, July 30th, and Sandberg and Andrew will hold their meetings on Tuesday, August 4th. Specific details and invitations will come directly from those campuses. And an important date to understand is that Friday, August 7th, is the deadline to choose an option, the blended onsite, remote, or the fully remote option. And I'm going to walk us through the choice form. Mr. Nolting, would you mind clicking on that button for me on the silver computer?
Silver.
Oh, sorry. I apologize. I walked away from the microphone. I apologize for that. How our computer is set up, I can't actually click on the form at the moment. But the form is very easy to fill out. It's just a matter of a few questions. You'll be asked to select which school you attend, which option you are picking, and then there are a couple of specific questions to those particular options. You hit submit, and the information has been sent to the school. That will come out with the plan tomorrow to families, and it will be a very easy process for people to go through.
I'd like to add to that choice form. It also talks about, also, parents will give us an idea how they're going to transport their students, via bus, walk, drive, drop-off. It also asks what kind of, they plan for lunch, bring their own lunch, buy a lunch, or between. It helps us plan for lunches. We're suggesting sack lunch. I don't know. I say these words are like, who thinks of these words? But brown bag lunch, sack lunch, I don't know, these, you know. Right, so it will help us determine with our buses, you know, numbers on bus as well as lunch. So I think Mr. Olson put this form together. Am I missing anything else on there?
No, but included in there are just reminders of the procedures for everything. And just double checks is how I mean. When you select fully remote, you're selecting for the semester reminders that if you're coming onsite or selecting the onsite remote, that you're required to follow all of the guidelines applied by the district and school. They're reminders with IDPH and CDC. So all of that is built into the system as checks and double checks and reminders.
As you can see, there's, I thank oversight committee for their participation. As you see, much work isn't put into this plan, much thought. Much, much, a lot of work, and much work to come. If the board approves this plan tonight, we know we have a lot of work out of us. We have a lot of work in solidifying the professional development. It has to take place during, when the staff comes back. We have a lot of work that's going to be done with the buildings and getting prepared, which they have been working on that. But again, that's why we're presenting this tonight.